I'll order the committee to hold meeting for Tuesday, June 25th.
Barazza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck. Peifer.
Here.
Chanson. Sulfur.
Here.
Wolf. Baron.
Here.
Lehman. Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwe.
Here.
Seron. Vocal singer.
Here.
That's nine.
It's nine. We have enough present to conduct the meeting. Second item on the agenda, reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the B A T V recording. Item number three is approval of the minutes for June 11th, 2024. Make it a motion.
All move.
Tagging.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Item number four is items removed or add or changed to the agenda. Is there anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Item number five is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak? Okay, Yvonne, give your name for the recording, please.
Hi, I'm Yvonne Dinwiddie. Haven't been here a while.
Yvonne, would you mind like getting closer to the microphone or bending it down toward you? Thank you so much.
That better?
That's much better.
Usually I can talk loud enough that you can hear me in the next county. But anyway, okay. I've been a while. It's been a while since I've attended and addressed the committee of the whole, but I've been keeping up with what's going on in Batavia. And I want to give you some things to think about. Hopefully, when you vote, you'll remember to do the right thing by all of us. First and most important, I attended the annexation meeting in Geneva regarding the property that's to be subject of the TIF district. The property to be declared blighted is prime real estate property, as is the Hollywood Casino Penn Entertainment property, as well as the Sugar Grove property that the freedmen, the cities, and the developers want to put in a TIF. The definition of blight has been prostituted from its original intent to rehabilitate slums to providing corporate welfare to rich developers who originally bought the land and held it speculating that it would become more valuable at a future date. Now they want to transfer that risk to the taxpayers. That isn't fair. Nearly 400 people packed the Sugar Grove public hearing that was held at Wabansee Community College Auditorium last week. The majority of them were opposed to the TIF and giving valid reasons why the property shouldn't be declared TIF eligible. There weren't as many people at the Geneva meeting, but there were dozens also when Aurora held its meetings for the casino TIF. Again, the majority of the people were opposed. The Geneva annexation meeting was a real eye opener to me. Some of the Geneva Alder persons talked about shifting traffic from Kirk Road, and I thought that was a good thing until I reviewed the 2018 traffic study that was specifically about the Couch Road extension from Roosevelt Road to Fabian Parkway. At that point, I realized that all the traffic would be routed from Fabian Parkway through Batavia and that much of the traffic would be trucks. There will be significant warehouse development in that TIF and the Venture Park development, which is just about across from the Fox Valley Ice Arena. All of these will add significantly to traffic on Kirk Road, which is already a dangerous road. The traffic study is too old to be accurate. Additionally, if you will remember, those of you who were on the council at the time, the pushback you got from the people who were opposed to the truck traffic from the waste transfer station and the proposed warehouse development near Wind Energy Pass in Batavia. The council chambers were packed on several occasions, and ultimately the warehouses were nixed in favor of the townhomes that were originally proposed. My point is that the mayor of Geneva and several council members said that Geneva is all one community. Well, I believe we are all members of Kane County and that what happens in Sugar Grove, Geneva, Aurora, and Batavia should be considered along with all the detrimental effects any development will have on all of us. Every TIF district affects every taxpayer in Kane County and as the townships and other taxing bodies have to forego the increment for 23 to 35 years and still maintain the roads and all the other facilities and things that the taxing bodies must manage. TIFs are absolutely nothing but corporate welfare and developers should be given back to the community instead of causing our schools and parks and other taxing bodies to do with less in order to facilitate their profits. We have well over 100 TIF districts in Kane County, and these new ones will directly affect Batavia and our quality of life. We will be subjected to the traffic from the casino and Geneva TIFs and the warehouses in addition to the possible crime that comes from all this development. I'm already seeing more houses for sale in Batavia after the huge tax increase we are just paying. The taxing bodies have to tax to the max to make up for the loss of the increment, which will result in the loss of residents and detriment to the quality of life. I urge you all to think very long and hard and consider the consequences of 23 to 35 years of TIFs. Additionally, and last of all, St. Charles is under pressure to renew their I M E A contract for electricity that is not scheduled to be renewed until 2035. I hope you will all remember the bad part of the contract Batavia entered into with Prairie State and the I M E A and the fact that the environmentalists are trying to shut down the coal plants even before the 2035 expiration of our contract. Please think long and hard before renewing any of these contracts and pay special attention to the Commonwealth Edison problems with the solar power credits and billing that was noted in one of today's papers. Thank you, and that's all.
Thanks, Yvonne. You bring up some good points. Totally understand what you're saying. Anybody else from the public? By the way, she is on the agenda.
Yes.
Anyone else have anything to say? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda, and I guess I'll read this one as well. Resolution 2024-094-R authorizing execution of the notice of award for the 2023-2024 lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement project to Five Star Energy Services. Can I have a motion?
All move.
Tagging.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that passes, then we'll go to council. Okay, item number seven, the presentation for year two, 2024 lead and galvanized steel water service replacement project. Emily.
Hello. Okay, give me one second. Am I good to just share this in presentation mode?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Hi, everybody. For the For those of you that don't know me, I'm Emily Conti. I'm a project engineer with EEI, been helping out with the city's lead and galvanized steel water service line replacement programs. So we're going to be talking about the year two program, which, thank you for passing the notice of award. So a little bit of a recap on the year one project. As a reminder, this was Batavia's first large-scale planned lead service line replacement. Utilized funding from the IEPA with 100% principal forgiveness up to a total of $4 million. And we originally estimated we'd be replacing around 280 service lines. So a bit of a summary on how that project went. We began construction on May 4th of 2023. We were able to complete 281 replacements, majority of those being full replacements from the main to the meter. And then we had 40 partials from main to B-box, 20 partials from the B-box to the meter. And we replaced 16,396.5 linear feet of services. That's over three miles. And throughout this replacement program, the water service was typically only offline for less than four hours. Overall, both the city staff and EEI deem this project a huge success. So moving into year two here, this is Batavia's second large-scale planned lead service line replacement, and this is going to be utilizing loan funding from the IEPA up to $4.5 million. This total is up from the original allocation from the IEPA of a little over $2 million, and that was due to city's efforts to obtain bypass funding. So huge effort there and great success that we were able to get the $4.5 million. So we're targeting around 350 to 400 lead service line replacements with this year two program. Just a little reminder and overview on the different types of replacements. So a partial would be from your water main to the curb box or B-box. That would be the city-owned or public side of the service. We also can do partials from the B-box or curb box into the house at the meter. This would be a private side replacement or the customer-owned side of the service. Or we can do a full replacement from the water main into the house to the meter. And note, as part of these programs, we're only replacing portions of services that are either lead, galvanized downstream, I'm sorry, that are either lead or galvanized downstream of lead. So construction overview, this was awarded to Five Star Energy Services for $3.9 million. The schedule overview here, oops. We're anticipating the notice to proceed in July of 2024, so next month here, and again, targeting two to three service replacements per day with a final completion of July of 2025, and again, this could be sooner. A little bit about the funding. This is an IEPA SRF loan-funded project with a 30-year loan term at 0% interest for the total loan amount of $4.5 million. Note that the IEPA has changed their qualifications for principal forgiveness eligibility after the year one program, and Batavia's year two program did not qualify for the principal forgiveness funding. However, the lead service line replacement loan terms are now 0% interest with a 30-year payback period, so still very advantageous loan terms. We're going to be having a town hall stakeholder meeting on July 16th. This is going to be with some city staff, EEI, and the contractor, Five Star Energy Services. Very similar to last year, we're going to be going through some introductions and opening remarks, little bit of a project overview, an overview of homeowner meetings and what the homeowners can expect throughout the process. And then we're going to have Five Star give a little bit of an introduction since they are a new contractor in these projects, and then we'll go over the estimated schedule and address any questions that stakeholders may have. So a project update so far, all TCEs, which are the temporary construction easements, again, these are required for SRF projects, but they're also highly recommended in any project you're doing. It's just, it's just a contract between the homeowner and the city so that the contractor has access to the private property. These have all been executed, and the fixture counts have been approved by the building department, so we are ready for permitting here. And mass communications, again, are ongoing with the stakeholders and the city, and we are going to be moving along with contracting with Five Star Energy Services. New this year, we've developed this infographic, which is off on the side there, between city staff and EEI, we put this together. This is going to be handed out to all stakeholders to kind of explain the construction process, what they can expect, and some important details so that there's no surprises to anybody. Again, just an ongoing communication effort on the city's end. Little reminder of the sequence of the operations, which we're going to bring this up again in the town hall meeting, but these resident meetings are to occur at least three, but no more than seven days before the scheduled replacement between the contractor and the resident. And then all traffic control and erosion control devices will be put in place. The contractor will move into the replacement and flushing of the new water service line, and then concrete asphalt restoration will occur, followed by any exterior or interior restoration items. So our live construction data collection through ArcGIS. This allows city staff to track service replacement status live, so this data is input by field staff and updated as they're moving through replacements. City staff have the ability to view all of this in live time. And we collect locations of the new services, any connections at main, abandoned services, and new B-boxes, so your underground stuff that you can't normally see when it's covered up, but this, these little points give city staff the ability to locate them much easier they ever need to go back to them in the future. We can also track additional service data and photos in field reports, which are stored through this GIS platform. And this is just a really good example of the day-to-day collaboration between the city staff and EEI staff and how this communication has streamlined this project. It's made it very efficient and easy for everybody to access what's going on. So kind of moving forward a little bit here, looking out. Year three program, so the IEPA just released their draft intended use plan a couple weeks ago, and Batavia has been allocated $7 million in loan funding. Again, these loan terms are 0% interest over a 30-year payback period, and this $7 million is estimated to cover all remaining lead service line replacements in the city. After the year two program, that would be around 500 remaining. The final intended use plan is expected in early July. We're not anticipating any changes to this, so we are still expecting that $7 million to be on the final intended use plan. And then there's going to be some additional discussions coming up here with city staff for the potential year three program. So if this project does move forward, the anticipated schedule would be to start design in July or August of 2024, with bidding occurring this fall, and then construction to start by this time of 2025. And then just another thank you to all the stakeholders in this lead service line replacement program, both year one and year two. We appreciate all the efforts and the support to date. Your one project was extremely successful, went very smoothly. City staff is very happy with the contractor's performance, and we look forward to the same success with year two. Any questions?
Questions?
We'll be having ongoing conversations about the year three program because while we have been allocated the potential to use up to $7 million, that doesn't mean that we have to use that. And if we were to use that, we have to think about, you know, what is the annual service on that debt over the next 30 years, and how will that impact water rates? So Peggy will do a financial analysis of all of that to help us better understand what that looks like, you know, at the same time balance that with the impact, the health impact that this will have, and being able to be lead-free here in the city of Batavia ahead of all of those cities who won't even have started to do this with the IEPA ready to issue requirements and timelines within which all cities across the nation are going to have to come into compliance. So we'll have a lot of further discussion about that, but I also want to thank Emily and Steve from EEI and just all the help that you've been on this project. It's, one of the reasons it's been so successful is your partnership and organization of all of this and consultation on how to do this the right way. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Lauren. Thank you for the clarification there. Yeah, just because you were allocated the $7 million, it doesn't mean you have to use all of it. And definitely important to note that you guys got ahead of most other communities when in 2027, a lot of them are going to be starting, and you guys are going to be done or nearly done. So thank you all as well.
Yeah, I would echo what Laura said, that it's, you know, getting ahead of this, and I mean, money's going to have to be spent at some point.
Right.
There's, there's no way around it, but getting it at 0% is as good as it gets. I mean, obviously, last time it was free, but we knew we couldn't expect that forever. So, and then just how successful it's been, and I know you, you mentioned, I was glad you showed it at the end, there were so many residents that were just so happy with it that it's, we don't always have happy residents when we disrupt their lives, so it's good that it came out well like that. So looking forward to more of those thank yous from the residents.
And going from 20 to 30 years is huge. You know, on the one hand, if there were an interest rate associated with this, we'd ask ourselves, is it worth it to pay the additional interest for those 10 years? But this is 0% interest, so no brainer that 30 years is better than 20. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Emily. Okay, on item eight, ordinance 2024-48, conditional use for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based in the GI General Industrial District. Zach?
So just so everybody's aware, staff report's the same for this item and the next, but it is two separate conditional uses. They're looking at the same property, but they are two different applicants they're co-locating. So just wanted to provide clarity before I start. So essentially, I will start with 2024-048, which is conditional use permit for motor vehicle sales and leasing new and used, internet-based. The applicant is Jose Coronella of Supersport Automotive, and he is currently located at 1521 Hubbard Avenue. He has been operating his automotive repair business at that property for some time now and is seeking to add internet-based sales as an additional service to his customers and to his portfolio business. This is something that he did previously operate at a different location in our industrial park, but with the relocation, it does require a new conditional use permit due to the consideration that each property has its own unique situation. In the review of this, we've worked with Jose quite a bit to get several improvements to the property done. Prior to him submitting this application, they paved the rear parking area, which was previously gravel. He is proposing an eight-foot solid fence for the rear storage area, as well as with his, his co-tenant, Mr. Riviera. So it is currently a chain-link fence, so it's going to be an eight-foot solid fence. They are going to be doing a reduction of the curb cut to two defined access points and restoring the city right-of-way and adding sidewalk to the property. He's already done some improvements where he's taken some non-compliant light fixtures and made them compliant, and he's put some safety bollards. He's worked with staff very, very well, and he's worked with the city engineer to come forward with a, you know, a plan for how the access points will work and striping should function on the property. You know, staff has placed several conditions that are consistent with how we places for all auto sale uses in the ordinance. Most of this is just to be clear on expectations and how they are conducting themselves, especially since it's internet-based, it's supposed to be appointment-only and no cars stored out front. If there's any questions on that use, I'd be happy to answer questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions? Mayor?
Yeah, I have no problem with this. I'm, approve it and don't have any issues with it. I do want to say, however, that we have had a problem with some car issues with some of the dealers or repair people, whatever they're claimed to be, take cars and start taking them apart and then leaving the parts out, laying out in the front, out in the back. It becomes very unsightly and it looks like a junkyard. And I think we, as the city, need to kind of tighten up our ordinance a little bit, and we've had some problems out on Randall Road, as many of you who are on the council may remember this, and we've had to go after some people, and they weren't too happy. But I think we need to let the word out from the very, very beginning that we're not going to sit here and allow for a bunch of, you know, taking apart cars with parts thrown all over the yard or crashed vehicles that may or may not ever be repaired be taken care of, and we've got some right now that I think may have to be talked to about kind of cleaning up their act. So I have no problems with what we're doing, but I think we need to let the word out that the city of Batavia is going to take a pretty tight look and control over this action of people leaving these cars sitting outside.
Yeah, and Drew Recko and I worked with the plan commission, and there was a condition where vehicles that are inoperable or needing repair, other than just, you know, oil change, brakes, have to be located in the rear storage yard or inside the building, as well as vehicles that are there towed, they have to be located in the rear. So anything that is located in front or on the side of the property in a marked spot has to be operable. So that is something that's in the conditional use permits for these as a condition of approval. And the applicants are here tonight, so if you have questions for Jose, he can come speak a little bit more about his business model as well.
Yeah, I would invite him up if he has anything he'd like to say.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say thank you for your consideration for the special use permit. I've been in the automotive industry since I was 11 years old, and I currently run Supersports Automotive with my beautiful wife, Sandy. And I will keep running the business till the day it passed. I don't want to cause any issues to the city, so I do plan to keep everything clean, and we've been making a lot of improvements to the property as far as adding a fence and many other things. We're planning to add a sidewalk and, you know, just being in compliance with the city.
Yeah, I was pleased to hear that was mentioned. You guys have already made some of those improvements, so I do appreciate that because that goes a long way to, you know, people think industrial areas and they don't think too much about it, but you can make a nice industrial area if you take care of it. So I definitely appreciate you doing that. Sarah?
Yeah, I like hearing that you went ahead of the, you know, ahead of the game with the lights and everything. Is there any type of work that you specialize in, any type of car, anything like that?
We specialize in domestic and nation vehicles. We do automotive repair and collision repair as far as also electrical. We also do ADAS calibrations for the new vehicles, for the cameras and radars, so we have all the equipment to do that as well. So we're a fully-equipped shop, and we're looking to expand to auto sales. We currently, we previously had auto sales across the street at 1530 Hubbard Avenue with no issues, but we needed, since we relocated, we needed to ask for a special use permit.
And since you're just up there right now, can you just mention name of the business, phone number, website, all that, so people can find you?
Yes, the name of our business is Supersports Automotive. We're located on 1521 Hubbard Avenue. Our phone number is 630-326-9443, and our website is supersportautomotive.com.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Based on that, can I have a motion to move forward to city council for approval, ordinance 2024-48, conditional use for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, internet-based in the GI General Industrial District?
All move.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Tony, second by George. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. So then the next one, number nine, for the conditional use for towing services establishment at that same location.
Yes, so with this conditional use application, Mr. Riviera of Riviera Towing is looking to locate his towing operation at 1521 Hubbard as a co-tenant of the facility. He currently operates his business out of West Chicago, and this would be seen as an expansion. He sees that this would be a good opportunity to offer additional services to our general area, but also work closely with Jose, offering towing for both, you know, some area, but also work closely with Jose, offering towing for both, you know, some of his clients and that need repair, as well as bringing clients to Jose. As I already stated, they have been making substantial improvements to the site. One thing to note is the eight-foot fence that they, they proposed, the minimum requirement on their code is six foot, so they are looking to propose something that is greater than the code requirement, knowing that is, it was likely going to be requested by either the Plan Commissioner or City Council. They will be storing all the towed vehicles in the rear of the property, any vehicles would be, or inside the building, and they generally are looking to use this as a, as a point of, you know, bring it and people come pick it up and they can move it out to other facilities, you know, body repair shops, other stuff, so it's not meant to be a permit storage facility, meaning, you know, a junkyard. There are several conditions that are unique to towing establishments in their conditional use ordinance. That is something that staff worked with the police chief on suggesting until the police department proposes and the city council ultimately adopts a license for towing establishments based off of previous interactions with other establishments. The city, to my knowledge, has not had any issues with Mr. Rivera and his operations in our area. However, this is something that the police chief suggested that with any of these conditional uses moving forward, we put this language in until a license is established. It will allow the police department to have a, a solid conversation with, with the applicant if they feel that they're, they have met a threshold such as inaccuracies in rates and providing the city with correct information, so that that is something that we work with Chief Maz on, and, you know, we are suggesting approval of this pending all those conditions.
You want to have any questions? And is the applicant here as well?
Yes, Mr. Rivera is here, as well as some of his family members, so if one of, someone from Rivera's towing would like to come up.
Hello, good evening. My name is Evelyn Rivera. I'm the daughter of Miguel Rivera and niece of Carlos Rivera. I work closely with them in the corporation, and we have worked very, very closely with Jose in making these changes to our building and trying to comply with the city, and we understand that there are new codes with the police and the city, and we are ready to comply with whatever they decide.
Right, thanks. I do have a question. I know some towing companies, the, the personnel keep tow truck like at their house. Do you guys plan to have them on-site, or do the, do your employees keep them local so they're at their home so they can respond to calls? How do you guys operate that way?
We plan to keep them at our site, like Zach had proposed that we would keep them in the rear.
In the rear, okay, those will be in the rear too. Okay, just checking. Thank you.
And also you may want to provide your business information similar as Jose did, your name and your phone number and your email address.
Yes, of course. We are Rivera's Towing Corporation. Our phone number is 630-701-0284, and our email is riveras towing at yahoo.com.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'd like to get a motion to, for approval to move to City Council, ordinance 2024-49, conditional use for towing services establishment in the GI General Industrial District.
So moved.
Moved by Malay, second by Ozzy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes as well. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 10, resolution 2024-95-R, approving a contract with electric conduit construction to perform 15 KV underground circuit installation at 2349 Main Street. And Gary is up there to tell us all about it.
Yeah, well, very quickly, actually. This is one of the 100% reimbursable type projects that we do in support of a new development. So, the developer will be paying 100% of the costs, and so that's why we are recommending to move forward with a word of the contract.
This would be the new Ignite facility?
This will be the new Ignite at the northeast corner of Deer Path and Main. And I have to do that with my hands to try and remember the directions.
Are there any questions on this? It's a nice one, it's not, oh, go ahead, Sarah.
I just have a quick question that's kind of related to this. Sidewalk is going in, correct?
Yes.
On Deer Path?
Yep.
But not all the way to Wilson, right?
Uh, on Deer, no, not on the east side.
Okay.
So yeah, Ignite is only doing it across their frontage, which is, which is, which is on the east side.
It's a good portion of it.
And I think, didn't we, Scott, are we still doing the temporary crosswalk?
I think we were going to have a crosswalk across to the other path then.
Yes, and then, because, because those two will match up once they get, there'll just be a crosswalk there.
Correct.
And when the northwest corner of Deer Path and Main develops at some point in the future, then that whole grid of, will eventually all be filled in. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I do like it when it's not our money being spent, so it's a good one. If I can get a, a motion to approve, recommendation to City Council for resolution 2024-95-R, approving a contract with electric conduit construction to perform 15 KV underground circuit installation at 2349 Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Malay, second by Ozzy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Goes forward as well, thank you. Item number 11, presentation of the strategic plan update. Max?
Hello, everyone. I didn't do anything, but we did do a lot with the strategic plan. How's that for a segue? So, I want to give you kind of overview of current status and some of our accomplishments so far. As a reminder, the strategic plan is in ClearDocs and ClearGov. We provide updates in there very regularly. Staff can testify to this, and we've been putting in updates on a regular basis, sometimes monthly, quarterly, sometimes more often as we do our activities that align with the strategic plan. So if you ever have some free time, go in there, look around, and you'll see that there's a lot of work that we are doing that...
Navigate the site.
Yes, I will in a second.
Thank you.
So I'll show you where that is and how we get to that, and give you a kind of overview of where we're at. As a bit of background, you know, the last time we talked about this, we had approved the plan. We basically spent the first couple of months talking with our staff, reviewing what we were tasked to accomplish and how we want to go about accomplishing that. So, most of our departments and all of our departments had conversations about how to get the things done that you want to see us get done. And so we've basically got for the next five years, our internal roadmap about how we're going to accomplish each of these activities. So we wanted to do that planning upfront so that allows us to understand what budgets are needed, what staffing is needed, what technologies are needed, and really allow us to see how items connect to one another and how they build upon each other. So from there, we identified the items needing to be completed in 2024, kind of laying a foundation for the next couple of years of the plan, and you should be expecting to see those throughout the rest of the year for approvals as needed, but also that we'll be making progress on those regardless. You'll also see in the plan that there is the, and I'll show you on the website, the framework for some data tracking in there that because we're just getting underway, you will see that data be put in kind of annually and as appropriate, and that'll allow you to track things over time, and that'll see how effective have we been in getting these things done. So I will now go to the website. And so this is our website. Let me go back to the city website so I can show you how to navigate there. So, the link to the website is bataviaile.gov/strategicplan24. You can also access it by going to city government and city of Batavia strategic plan. And it'll take you to this website. You have the option to download it as a PDF, to share it with others via email, Facebook, Twitter, et cetera, and the main area is going to be here in outcomes, and this goes through all of our outcomes that we've got. You click on one of them, it takes you here, you can see how we're doing on them, and then this is what I alluded to with the data. Over time, you will see those be put in, so like, we have a data point already with the number of Code Red subscribers. We're at 1041. That might even be a little out of date already because I think we had it in about a month ago, but that data continues to get updated throughout the year. We're tracking how well attended our community engagement events are. That's something you can expect kind of at the end of the year as we finish those up. Then you can go through, dive into any of these as you see fit. We really want to try to give you and the community an ability to have that insight as we work through these priorities and these projects. So I want to talk about, there's a video in here that's causing that, is why. I'm not going to play the video, but regardless, I want to talk about some of the accomplishments and things we've, we're kind of either substantially completed with or are on the, or have already completed. We've been working closely with the Chamber and Main Street to work on the Business Pulse Survey, which is designed to really take the temperature of our business community, understand their plans for expansion, contraction, how we can improve, and that's going to allow us to create our economic development strategic plan, which is another one of the items in our broader strategic plan. One of the items in here was also our community oriented policing officer and the comfort dog. As you saw in a weekly update, that has been selected, our internal candidate has been selected, and I believe the police department is working on finding a very nice dog to accompany that person. We've been working very closely with Fermilab on a couple of things. The photo up here is their push-in ceremony for their Fermilab Fire Department. We also had Liam Mermenga, the, the executive director of Fermilab, was here in February to provide a really nice update, and that continues to build our relationship with one of our main economic engines in town. We're also really happy that we were able to secure grant funding from Congressman Bill Foster to expand the wastewater, the, the trail along the wastewater treatment facility. That's something that wasn't necessarily in our plan, but definitely aligns with a lot of the things that we're trying to accomplish, and so that's something that, when we applied for that grant, we mentioned how it aligns with our strategic plan, and that was something that we've heard helps get grant opportunities, is when they see that there is that alignment and that it contributes to something bigger. In choosing how to spend money from the, the single-use bag fee, you chose to allocate some funding for Parkway Tree Expansion, and so that's something that we're going to be bringing in and, and bringing into that program. We're still having the discussions around whether we want to expand the number of people or expand the percentage we give people. That's something that we'll be able to decide and talk more about throughout the year. Tree preservation ordinance has enacted and in force. As you've seen with some developments recently, those do get put in place, and that developers are having to either maintain more trees or provide compensation for removing those trees. And additionally, we obtained Administrative Consulting Specialists LLC to help monitor grant opportunities, and that's someone who we've been working with closely to kind of see what's out there and how we can promote those to both ourselves and use those, but also as appropriate to businesses in our business community. We've rolled out and implemented Code Red, so many of you have probably received those alerts at times. We've created a presentations and report hub, which I will also show you. So anytime somebody presents to City Council the next day, or if they send it or...
Close the box.
So on this website, you can see all prior presentations. We link to the exact timestamp in the video of where this is, so if you clicked here, it would go to the BATV video exactly when it is. You can see their presentation, and we've started, and we go all the way back to January of this year. So we've been keeping track of those, and that allows us to go back to those presentations. We get a lot of emails and questions, hey, can you send me that? Or, when did we talk about that? This website will show you that and keep that there. Back to PowerPoint. Every year, the police department does their annual report, and in that annual report is their use of force data. That's something that we've posted on our website and that we've also added to the strategic plan ClearGov page. So if you click on the published use of force data, you will actually see the attachment to that page that contains our use of force data for this year. One of the things is we also worked on that capstone study with the University of Illinois-Chicago to look into our energy infrastructure. That's something that was completed, and we're planning on providing an update on that with some next steps in July, so that's something that you should expect, and that's going to really inform kind of our long-term infrastructure spending on our electric utility. We've worked on electrifying our vehicle fleet. We purchased photo, or plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, so the ones that around town will mostly operate on full electricity, but can also drive much further, and it really gives us that flexibility. Those vehicles have been purchased for community and economic development, the new staff, the new building inspector, Public Works, I think Electric has a car or two, I'm not entirely sure who has them, and then IT, their GIS department has a, has a plug-in hybrid electric as well. Staff have been loving them. They're nice to drive, but they're also mostly electric. We formed our AI steering committee to kind of give us a long-term plan and how to incorporate that in a safe and effective way within city government. We've got a really good group of people from across many departments. We've been meeting with, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Microsoft to talk about what opportunities exist there with AI and the governments, and the government ecosystem, as well as working on some broad policies to make sure we're using it safe and effectively. One of our items was also a tabletop exercise and get that underway. We have it scheduled for early August. We don't know the topic yet, that's going to be the Kane County Emergency Management Office's job, but we've got our, our full list of people who would be responding to the Emergency Operations Center in, in emergency. We're going to be attending a training through the state and through Kane County Office of Emergency Management that talks about how Emergency Operations Center interfaces with the incident command system structure, so what we're supporting, you know, our first responders back at the EOC, how does that work? And then we've also obviously adopted the downtown plan. I do also want to cover a few things that the Fire Department strategic plan has accomplished. So, all Fire Department supervisory staff completed their LMI training, that's Leadership Management International. That is designed to provide additional leadership capabilities and really grow the leadership capabilities within the Fire Department, and then also we have city staff who are participating in it as well, and so that's just really building a, a group of really up-and-coming leaders within the city. We've been able to provide additional technology access to the Fire Department to really help them improve their ability to take trainings and communicate with one another. That's been something that has been well-received. We created and published the recruitment video, which is what you see up here. Police and Fire Command staff are having more regular meetings that really makes sure that we're coordinating amongst one another. We've been working on some monthly EMS shift drills for this year with practical components, and then we're making a significant improvement in the staffing study, and that's something we'll probably be bringing back later this year. I want to give you a brief overview of some of the things you can expect kind of the second half of this year. One is our organizational capacity study. That's going to look at, long-term, give us a roadmap for hiring and kind of addressing how do we build up the internal capacity to accomplish all the things you want us to be accomplishing? As I prefaced, we're going to be giving you an update on the energy infrastructure study and the next steps from there. We're going to be working on getting permits online and really wrapping that process up, as well as, we've been working diligently on getting some meet the council community engagement events scheduled for the summer that, I'm not 100% if we've, we've told you about that yet, but those are coming, and I, and we're, we're pretty excited about it, it'll be a nice time, and then we're working on standardizing the memo template and adapting some equity and impact analysis tools. Additionally, one thing just to kind of preview as we go in, you know, it's already June, budget season will be here before we know it. What we're really glad about is that they exist in the same platform, and with that, we're going to be able to see how our budget advances our strategic priorities. And so you'll see how much of the budget aligns to environmental sustainability, how much of the budget applies to this, and that'll kind of allow you to evaluate how we're allocating our funding toward our ultimate outcomes. It's not obviously going to be perfect, there might be some misallocations, or not, that's not the right word, but it'll allow you to think kind of over the next couple of years how we're budgeting for our priorities. You should expect to see some things in the budget for next year that are tied to the strategic plan, that are some big-ticket items, but also things that kind of fit in in the timeline sequentially, and then also the results of that organizational capacity study will get to kind of resources that are needed to accomplish these things. You know, that was a lot, we've been doing a lot, and it's six months through a five-year strategic plan, so we're, we're excited at where we're at. We, we know we've got more upcoming, but really, one of the things that we've noticed internally is that it'll, folks will say that here and there, like, ooh, that's a strategic plan item, that's something that aligns with the strategic plan, and so there is that internal understanding of how day-to-day work and how day-to-day activities connect to that, and it allows us to mark it down, to make it a note in clear plans, and so that's where those things are getting put in. And so we're, we're working on it, and we're continuing to make good progress, and that, I think that'll continue over the next several years and definitely throughout the rest of the year.
I like hearing that staff is using that information in your daily jobs. That's really cool. And also what you mentioned about the grants, seeking out grants, if you can tie it directly to the strategic plan. I know it's a wealth of information, you have done a ton of work, so we appreciate it, and it's really cool that it is helping with a lot of things, especially those grants. That's amazing. Thank you.
Yeah, that's something that, I was at an event today with DCEO, and they were giving a grant workshop, but how to get DCEO grants? were giving a grant workshop, and how to get DCEO grants. They explicitly called out some of the things that like, tell us how this fits into your bigger puzzle. And so even just being able to say, this is a strategic plan item, it raises its elevation among grant reviewers, and that's something that we do believe might have helped us get the, the grant for the bike trails, because we connected it to, here's how this piece connects to our wastewater treatment plant, which connects to development plans, which connects to long-term bike and pedestrian plans. And that's something that grant reviewers and state agencies and those who give grants really like to see, so thank you.
And also demonstrating ways in which projects are something that are positive for the region and not just Batavia, and that also our ability to complement what is being done by other agencies. So for instance, with regard to the bike path, the fact that our Park District has a $600,000 OSLAD grant to, you know, completely rebuild the area where the skate park is now, and how closely related, you know, having a good bike path adjacent to that on both sides of our river will complement that project, so. And then just a thank you for the resource of hiring the grant writer, because while, you know, staff still certainly have to be involved in providing the information to the grant-writing organization, I just know that that's going to pay dividends, and having them as a resource to help us put all of that information together, rather than staff try to find, squeeze it in somehow to their time.
Any other questions? Comments?
Yeah, this is great, it's, it's good to see, and then like Sarah said, it's, it's good to see people, it's, it's in the thought process, there's the ownership of it, it's the, oh, hey, this is, this is going towards that, everybody thinking instead of tactically, strategically, so that's, it's good to hear.
Okay, thank you. Next is project status.
Okay, just a few things. The Plan Commission has a couple items on their agenda on Wednesday, actually, yeah, coming up, and it's to replace, a variance to replace an existing detached garage, and then also to design review approval for a proposed 592 space parking deck for the Aldi corporate campus. The Fire Department, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners have approved two promotions on June 14th. The first is Lieutenant Casey Belsitis will be promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief, and also firefighter paramedic Rich McDonald will be promoted to the rank of Lieutenant. And we will have promotion and swearing in at the July 1st City Council meeting. The, on June 18th, Deputy Chief Mike Johnson participated in training with members from BPS 101 and Kane County Regional Office of Education, and the topic was specific to post-incident reunification of students with their parents and guardians. And Scott Haynes has been working on a pilot project in our downtown with a group of volunteers who have replanted several beds along Wilson Street and the boardwalk shops, and the volunteers have pledged to care for these new plants throughout our summer season. The work on Southwater Street has been substantially completed, but final landscape restoration will occur in the fall once the temperatures are a little bit cooler. And then our contractor for the Carriage Crest Project has said they are still planning to commence work here in early June with a completion timeline in October. One of the things that I wanted to ask all of you is if you have given any more thought to the urban blue public restroom idea, the prefabricated building that comes at a significant, a significant cost advantage compared to us doing construction from, from scratch? If you wanted staff to continue to pursue that idea, and then if you had an idea of where you think that that should be located, is that a topic that you'd like to see coming up here on a upcoming COW soon? Okay. And then we were wondering if you had any further direction for staff based on my report last time of having the meeting with the Geneva Highway Commissioner, Township Highway Commissioner, and then also Chief Maz's input from Sheriff Ron Hain. Is there any further action that you want us to take with regard to Skyline Drive at this time, or is it something that you want to just let lie for the time being?
I mean, personally, when we voted on it last time, it seemed to vote down doing anything, and I think there's no point, especially if Geneva Township is just going to put up a gate, then we're just, we're just right back where we started, we're not accomplishing anything, so.
And I strongly believe that a dangerous situation is created if we can't, if we can't put a stop sign in at that intersection, so I'm totally against moving forward with the project if we have no ability to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any others? Dustin?
I was going to ask, has there been any update on the River Bank stabilization project?
We're moving forward with, we, I think we're going to have some more information about the open bids this week. Gary, do you want to chime in on this one?
And then we'll come to the COW, the next COW meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fantastic. Do we have an idea of how, when that's going to happen?
Uh, next COW is...
So if the contract's awarded by mid-July...
Yeah.
Typically, three weeks or so after a contract award, construction can start, because they have to get their bonds in place and insurance, so mid-August, mid to late August, construction will be starting.
Right, so we do know that our Riverbank stabilization project is something that needed to be completed before Sturdy Shelter wants to put on, on their decks. My understanding at this point is that Sturdy Shelter is looking at next spring for construction of those decks, and so we are still working in a timeframe that would allow that to happen.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any others? Other others? I had mentioned last time, Laura, to add on to COW, a discussion on BATV funding.
Yes, and I talked with Alan about that, and he said because he's not going to be at the first COW in July, that we'll schedule that for the second, and so that is on the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. At this point, I need to get a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Malay, second by Ozzy. There'll be nothing coming out of this, so thank you for those that attended tonight.